Waiting for Mr. Washington again. That does sound like a movie title, doesn't it? That was Joshua Bondock, right? Samuel Bondock. And then I have Joseph Campbell and Susan Miyamoto on the piano. So Joshua, Samuel, Joseph, and Susan, thank you very much, one more time. And Susan, are they students of yours? Various and sundry students, right? And Susan has put them together this evening just for us. And so, thank you very much. All right. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And tonight, we have, I saw Sylvester Scott in the house. And there he is. Welcome. Nice to see you again. So we're going to have the invocation by Sylvester Scott from the Bahai Community of Temecula, followed by the flag salute by Councilmember Mike Nigar. So if you will stand. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Oh, thou forgiving God. These servants are turning to the kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. Oh God, make their hearts good and pure in orders that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits that the light of the Son of reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. Oh Lord, verily we are weak, but thou art mighty. Verily we are poor, but thou art rich. We are the seekers, and thou art the one sought. Oh Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us. Bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom. That we may drink deep of the water of life. May be enkindled by the fire of thy love and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. Oh God, my God. Cast upon this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. Oh Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieeth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. Oh Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty and render the alporians of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Suffer this esteemed nation to be held in honor and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
If you would turn and face the flag with me, recognize the principles for which it stands, and say with me-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to welcome, maybe I'll have the city manager do it, I'd like to welcome our new city clerk and Mr. Stand-in Assistant City Manager. Would you like to welcome her this evening?
Certainly. She got an informal welcome last time she sat in the audience with us, but please join me in welcoming Randy Joel to the team, who's going to be her first time running the show from the hot seat. So, welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, with that, I'll call the roll. Councilmember Comachero-
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
I'm here.
Don't give her a hard time already.
I was thinking about rearranging the agenda, just for the fun of it.
No.
Councilmember Roberts is absent. Councilmember Washington?
Normally, Mr. Nigar acknowledges for me, but since he skipped me tonight, I'm here.
And Mayor Edwards.
Here. Just ignore them, okay? Just ignore them. You'll get used to it. All right. We have some very special presentations this evening, and one of them is particularly bittersweet. The city has commissions, and they are the, well, for lack of a better term, they are the workhorses of the council. They do a lot of pre-work before things come to the council. They make recommendations to the council. And one of those commissions is the Community Service Commission. And I always jokingly say, it's the happy commission. And the commissioners are appointed by the council, and they really do work hard. And some of our commissioners have been here for a very long time. And one of those commissioners is Charlotte Fox. And Charlotte has been here for a number of years, and she has decided to retire from the Community Service Commission. So, it's Charlotte in the audience, and we would like to honor her this evening. Charlotte's very involved with the community as well. So, Charlotte, come down and let us honor you this evening with this special certificate of appreciation. So Jeff, if you would like to, I don't know if I have a copy to read, so you might not be able to take this down with you. Yes, I do, right here. So if you would like to take this down for Charlotte, and I will read this as you go. This is going to be tough, because you have been on the commission almost as long as I can remember. You served with Tom when he was on the commission. We had a lot of fun going out and looking at the Christmas lights, and oh my gosh, so many memories. City Temecula Certificate of Appreciation presented on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Temecula to Charlotte Fox. Nearly sixty years ago, Charlotte's first experience with civic duty began giving her a deep-seated desire to seek opportunities to work with and serve the public. Charlotte has served in many capacities with several area and regional programs and legislative committees. Most notably, Charlotte has served as a member of the City of Temecula Community Services Commission for over eleven years. As a member of the Community Services Commission, Charlotte has exemplified the Temecula spirit through her tireless advocacy on behalf of the community and unwavering support of city staff with a passion for parks and recreation, arts and culture, youth programs, intergenerational activities, and human services. We would like to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for her immeasurable experience, dedicated service, loyalty, and commitment to the city of Temecula. Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you. This is wonderful, and I am, I came in to fill an unexpired term, and I will be leaving an unexpired term. And this, of course, is going to make room for someone wonderful to become a commissioner. I fully believe that a commission is a first opportunity for most of the public to become acquainted with their city government. And I've been privileged to serve, and I thank you greatly for this award. Thank you so much.
And we're still going to see you around. I know we are.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Nigar. Charlotte, wait a minute.
Hold on a quick second, Charlotte. Hold on. You're not going to get away that quickly. You know, I just wanted to thank you, and I think it bears mentioning, you know, a lot of people come to that podium and say what the council should do and what the city should do. Even fewer get involved in their community, and even fewer than that do the work. And doing the work means showing up to all the meetings that you go to and all the events that you plan. And one thing that I am reminded about you is that event in, event out, meeting in, meeting out, year in, year out, you showed up, you did the work. Temecula is a better place because you were on the commission. And I just wanted to say that, and say thank you personally for your service.
Well, thank you for that recognition. As you know, one of my other passions is making sure that citizens don't forget the privilege they have to vote in this country. And it's so undervalued in so many ways these days. So I would put in a plug that even a vote is a participation in your local government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. And the other presentation is a very special one for one of the, one of our community icons. I guess I can say icon. You don't have to be old to be an icon, do you? I know. Okay, I'm not going any farther with that one. So, a very special award was presented to Jack and Linda Williams, and you probably know them better as Richie's Diner. And he brought an entire entourage today. If he had brought in all the fans of Richie's Diner, we would not be able to contain them in this room. So I'm going to come down and meet you at the podium so that we can present you with this very special award. So I will meet you down there.
Sure, everybody come up. Come on.
Yes, bring the entourage.
Hey, how many chances do you have? Come on.
And as part of the entourage, if you're watching at home, please gather around the television set right now. Put on your Richie's Diner t-shirt and bring out your Richie's Diner secret decoder ring. Get out the, I had peach cobbler, I shouldn't say this. I went to breakfast last week. I had a business meeting in the morning for breakfast, and the person I met for breakfast had a traditional breakfast. All I had was peach cobbler. I could not eat for the rest of the day, so. So, this is to Jack and Linda Williams, and we got the picture. Can you put the picture up? Go ahead, go ahead and put the picture up. There it is. Now, I will explain to you the reason that Linda is not in the picture, it's because she had had knee surgery. So she was convalescing at home and rooting for everybody in the family. So we have Gary on the left, and then we have Sally, Sally Sizzler, everybody calls her Sally Sizzler, yeah. And then we have daughter, right? Cindy, daughter, yeah. And then there is the infamous Jack. And then we have granddaughter, right? Mackenzie. Okay, so, beautiful picture. And then Linda was at home, gathered around the television set recuperating with the knee, all right? So, this is City of Temecula Certificate of Congratulations presented on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Temecula to Jack and Linda Williams, founders of Richie's Real American Diner. We would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Jack and Linda Williams as recipients of the Silver Plate Award in the Independent Restaurants Multi-Concept Category given by the International Food Service Manufacturers Association. The Silver Plate Award acknowledges the leadership and dedication put forth by the individuals and celebrates their advancement within the food service industry. In 1991, the first Richie's Real American Diner was established in Temecula and became a community favorite for old-fashioned country cooking and using only the best ingredients. Jack and Linda's philosophy is simply pleasing people. We wish them every future happiness and continued success. This is an international award, and you were selected as the best.
The best small chain in America.
In America. The best small chain in America. Well, I'm not surprised. So I'm going to come over here and get my hug from Jack, and then you can pass the microphone around, and you can take a couple of minutes.
Oh, we're so proud of you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Peach cobbler for everybody.
Thank you, everyone, City Mike, and Jeff, and Chuck, and all of you. Thank you so much. It's been a privilege and a pleasure for Linda and I to be blessed to be in Temecula, even though Don Vaughn's my neighbor and insurance is high because of that, you know. And all of you know why. But it's a privilege to be in Temecula. And just think of this. Paradise Chevalier was named the top dealer in America. South Coast Winery, top winery in America. And Richie's Diner, the top small chain in America. Look what's happening in Temecula. You know, it's amazing. I mean, you really stop and think about that. But our mission statement is two words, pleasing people. And we really try to do that. And I'm going to turn this over to Linda, because Richie's was founded because of just her great idea and how she can cook.
Yes, sir. It really was not my idea. You see, I used to have a life, but Jack wanted a diner, so that's where I am. But anyway, thank you to all of you so much here at the council. Mary Ann, this is a wonderful, wonderful experience for Jack and myself, and we so appreciate it. We're kind of a small town, and so we kind of love that, huh? But anyway, and to all of you who've come, thank you so very much. And I'll say from our crew and management team, they would like to say thank you very much for coming and representing Richie's Real American Diner, which we are so proud of. And y'all, we are kind of hometown Americana. And yes, because you can come to Richie's and get the peach cobbler. And you can bring your kids, and they can have the chocolate shakes right up at the counter. And pretty soon, like next August, which is right around the corner, they can have the 25-cent root beer float. But I want to tell you the one thing that's so important to all of us, that patriotism reigns at Richie's Diner, which is so, so important. We feel so good about that. You know, we live in a wonderful country called America, and we're very, very pleased for that. And we thank you all so very much. Oh, we love you guys.
Thank you.
My honor to work with you for all these years, and thanks for the heads up. I need more ice cream for 25-cent root beer floats.
This is Steve Reed. He's an executive vice president of Cisco, and we've been with Cisco for thirty-plus years, and loyalty means a lot to us. Thank you, Steve.
Don.
Oh my God, I'm honored to be here for you and Linda. It's been a pleasure working with you, and to another twenty years.
Well, I've been a customer of Richie's for the past ten years, and Jack and I have been good friends for the past four or five good years. And it's been a real honor to know Jack. And I make it to Richie's on my way from La Jolla to Indian Wells every single weekend, two or three times. So it's just a great place, and I've loved Temecula. I'd love to live up here, you know, instead of coming through it every week twice.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the city. And you know what? We're so blessed to live in Temecula. What a blessing it is. Just, you can thank God every day, and we can wake up and say, we're in Temecula.
Aw, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
And if you haven't tried the peach cobbler, oh my goodness, you don't know what you're Congratulations, best in America. All right. So, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have two speakers under public comments, and we do not have any speakers under consent.
All right. Then.
The first speaker under public comment will be Chuck Reer, followed by Wayne Hall.
All right. So, a total of thirty minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right. Mr. Reer, you're first. Oh, you're up. Hello.
They said my name, so I'm here. Honorable mayor and council members, it's probably the fifth or sixth time I've been up here, but I was taught many, many years ago to ride your bicycle on the street opposing traffic. And there's nothing more disturbing than to be walking down the street on the sidewalk and have some kid come whistling by you. It scares the poop right out of you. That's number one. Number two is the trash. I have seen many, 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 many New Brunswick times, you've got a trash can sitting there, and the people will throw it right on the ground. It's called laziness. And when it affects them, they're going to be the first ones to scream the loudest. And that's all I've got. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Reer. And next speaker, please. Oh, Wayne, you're not going to come up? All right. Then, we're going to, let me get my pages straight. City council reports, anybody? Nobody? Mr. Comachero.
Yeah, just real quickly, there's an event going on this evening in wine country honoring one of EMWD's, that's Eastern Municipal Water District's board members, Randy Record. And Randy has served and been an icon in his own community, which is Hemet, for a very long time, and he's served on that board for as long as I can remember. And he was just recently elected chairman of the board of MWD, the Metropolitan Water District, and that's a big deal. That's a huge, huge agency that covers very important water issues for all of Southern California and beyond. And it's great not only to have somebody with that kind of experience leading that board, but to have somebody from Southwest Riverside County advocating for our issues is just great. So I couldn't be at that event tonight, I would have liked to be, but I just think we should all give him a hearty congratulations for a job well done.
Yeah, and I'd say ditto. All right. And we had no speakers under consent calendars, so we'll move on with item number one. Standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Item number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, operating agreement with Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2014-15. Item number five, sponsorship agreement with Temecula Valley International Film and Music Festival for 2014. Number six, marketing agreement with Temecula Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2014-15. Item number seven, sponsorship agreement with the Off-Road Nights Foundation for the 2014 Off-Road Nights Dirt Lifestyle Festival. Number eight, agreement for consulting services with environmental science associates for an environmental impact report for the Altair Specific Plan. Number nine, approval of track map 36295 located west of Butterfield Stage Road, east of Walcott Lane, north of Los Arena Way, and south of Caie Chapos. Number ten, granting of non-exclusive easement to Eastern Municipal Water District in connection with the installation of a sewer main within city property located at Old Town Front Street and First Street. Number eleven, award a construction contract for the citywide slurry seal fiscal year 2014-15, PW14-06.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and a second. Record your votes, please. And that is four with Mr. Roberts absent. So I will recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Community Services District, Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency, Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Financing Authority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, you need the experience, so why don't you go ahead and call the roll.
Sure. Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
I'm here. And so is Director Washington.
There it is.
Excellent. Director Roberts is absent, and President Comachero.
Here.
Thank you. You're welcome, anytime.
Do we have any public comment under this portion?
We do not.
Thank you, and then we'll dispense with the reading of the rules. We have one item under consent calendar. Item twelve, consider approval of the action minutes of July 8th, 2014.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Edwards, a second by Mr. Washington. Please cast your votes. That motion carries unanimously, four-zero, with Mr. Roberts absent. Not much on the agenda tonight. Kevin, you have a director's report.
Yeah, I was told that by my colleague here, so I'll try to keep it brief.
Okay.
With the first slide, start your entertainment weekend early, beginning this Thursday night, with the Summer Sunset Concert Series at the Temecula Amphitheater. Enjoy the sounds of The Answer, a Temecula classic rock favorite. Get there early. Gates open at 5:00 PM, and the concert begins at 7:00 PM. Hot Summer Nights is definitely in full swing. You know, we were down here last Friday, and Old Town was definitely packed. This Friday's lineup will include the Jeremy Brown Trio, Rocky Sharp, Rudy T-Band, Flight Risks, and Barbwire. You can catch these bands from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at the Pub and Group, Temecula Cheese Company, Mad Medallions, Third Street Smokehouse, or Bailey's. All contact information is available at temeculaevents.org. And, say it with me, Armando, there's no place like home. Follow the Yellow Brick Road as the Fine Arts Network Theater Company utilizing two casts brings the timeless classic, The Wizard of Oz, onto Temecula's stage. The junior cast performs this weekend, the 26th and 27th, as part of an annual two-week camp that teaches children addition techniques, rigorous rehearsals, and dance choreography, culminating in a complete show on stage with three performances over the weekend. The adult cast runs from August 1st through the 10th. Tickets are available at temeculatheater.org and at the ticket office in the Murricone Main Street. And by the way, the young man in the photo is aspiring actor playing the cowardly lion. That's Sean Barnett, the son of theater manager Bae Barnett. So there's no pressure there, right?
Yeah, right.
That concludes my report. Thanks.
Better keep your day job, Armando.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Butler, anything further?
No, I believe Mr. Hawkins covered it all tonight.
Yeah, I think he did. Okay, thank you. Any director's reports this evening?
No.
Second. You're just, you're a little heavy-handed on the gavel. Just wanted to let you know.
Is that a formal complaint? Is that a motion?
It's just a request, that's all.
Okay. That request is ignored. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Please cast your votes.
Oh, we got to vote?
I got no buttons.
Okay, well, with that, any objection?
No.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you. I believe that was a little statement right there. All right, then, I'm calling to order the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Let the record reflect that Comachero, Nigar, Washington, and Edwards are here. Roberts is absent. And do we have any public comments?
We do not.
We do not? All right, then, moving on to the consent calendar. I have number thirteen, action minutes. Number fourteen, authorization of fiscal year 2014-15 special tax levies citywide. And that's it? We're not going to take all the decimal point items?
Move consent calendar.
Okay. I have a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Washington.
Would it be possible, since this item has the word tax levies, to get ever-so-brief staff report?
Yes, it would be, and I think that's probably prudent, so give me a second for discussion.
You got your second.
All right, so I have motion and a second for discussion, and could I have an ever-so-brief staff report, please? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
The action before you tonight is a levy of special taxes, also called Melrose, related to Melrose districts that were formed in the city. Throughout the city, in New Year's 2003 through 2006, these items are already been approved via ordinance, and this action is before you tonight to provide to you the annual budgets that are being levied for each of these districts. It is not in addition to any previous-year tax, and it is consistent with what prior year levies have been, based on admin charges and the debt service payments that we make on an annual basis. If you have any additional questions, feel free to-
Just a quick question, I think, well, I know the answer, but just for the sake of the people out there watching and here, this is not a new tax, this is a continuation of long-established taxes that were voted in many years ago, and it just has to be reauthorized every year. Is that correct?
That's correct. These are thirty-year bonds, and they're about ten years in on most of them.
Thank you.
Okay, so, nothing new, same old thing. We just need to re-up, as it were.
Thank you, David. Just wanted to get that out there.
Mr. Nigar.
Just a quick comment when the appropriate time comes.
Okay, I believe that time is now.
Oh, okay. While Mr. Comachero's comment is correct, and I'm, thank you for pointing that out, I think it's also important to note that when we could, we did also lower these taxes approximately two years ago. We, now, I noticed Crown Hill isn't on this levy, or is it? Am I missing it? Or is that going to come at a separate time? But about a year and a half, two years ago, through the diligence of Mr. Bilby, actually lowered the community facility district taxes at Crown Hill, at Wolf Creek, and at Harvest.
Crown Hill is 14.1.
Oh, there you go. I didn't see it there. Thank you.
On the previous-
On the other page. And we were able to do that by refinancing those bonds, not adding any time to their, to the amortization of those bonds and getting a lower interest rate. I just want to charge our staff, first of all, as always, a good job, but charge- I just want to charge our staff, first of all, as always, good job, but charge our staff to continue to look at all CFDs for that possibility, if they're worthy of refinancing, and if taxes can additionally be lowered in that regard.
And that's true. Thank you for bringing that up.
Good thing we had some discussion.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. I can call for the question, so we can go ahead and cast your votes. And that's four with Mr. Roberts absent. And do we have any subsequent reports? Seeing none, I will call for adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we're going to move along, and I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we are going to go into a public hearing. Do we have any comments? But I'll go ahead and read anyway.
We do, Madam Mayor. We have one. Wayne Hall.
All right. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Number 15, weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year 2013-14. So could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This item before you is consideration of a resolution. They will place an assessment on approximately 30 vacant pieces of property that fail to comply with the weed abatement provisions of our code. If you recall, every spring, code enforcement embarks on the task of ensuring that our weed abatement program is enforced in the springtime, and by the summertime, we must have all these vacant pieces of property that have hazardous vegetation abated. This year, we identified approximately 160 lots that were noncompliant, and we sent out notices. Approximately 110 of those properties did not comply to the second notice. Ultimately, only 30 properties did not comply with a third notice, so we had to undertake that through our third-party consultant contractor. This resolution is, in essence, placing a lien on those properties for us to be able to recover the costs associated with the abatement process.
All right. So we had properties that allowed their weeds to grow. We put signage on the properties, asking them to abate. They did not. We notified them using the rules and requirements as specified, and they did not adhere to those. And we notified them again, as we were supposed to, and they still didn't. So then we have to go in, and we take on the abatement process ourselves, and then we have to rebill them to reimburse the city.
For the cost associated.
For the cost associated. So we ended up with 30 properties that had not complied, and that's where we are right now.
Right.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open...Are there any questions of staff first? No? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and then Mr. Wayne Hall, come on down. How are ya?
150% behind this. I don't have a problem, but I don't think it goes far enough. I have a bone to pick. Blue lines. You know, those little creek beds that the bird people and the tree people and that city has to go to the environmentalists and to flood control and everything else. I am very much aware of what happened back in 1992 when we had our floods, and it was caused because of weeds in the river, and it held the water back. Now, this is gonna be of a lesser need, obviously, but I want to give you an example. The best example I can give, because I've got five items that I...But one of them I'll give is Morongo Road between the church and the elementary school. I've had a bone to pick about this since day one. Many years ago, right at the same time we had our flooding, they went in there and knocked down all the siblings and all the little sprouts, and they cleaned it all out because it flooded. It flooded so much that it went into the church parking lot and went out the back of it. Obviously, it hasn't been done since then. I know it's a pain to deal with the environmentalists and flood control, but we need to look at our blue lines, and I'm not saying all of them, and I don't mean to do them all at one time. A little rotation period would be just fine. Once every three or four years would be fine. But on Morongo Road especially is my best example. The twigs have grown into trees. And when we're not talking little trees, we're talking 60 feet tall. We're talking about a stink that...Well, let me put it this way. I've been in the Marine Corps for 20 years, and I cannot describe that stink along that little sidewalk right there between the elementary school and the church. And I know it belongs to flood control. Now, if you follow that same creek, it's concrete across the street, and farther up, there's an HOA, and they keep all theirs clean. They keep the weeds cut because it's a dirt ground, and it's trimmed, and they use weed eaters. But this one property doesn't own, I don't know by whom or what. And the example is, those twigs have grown into trees, and now it's even hotter to cut them, and it's a pain. But the fact is, it's still gonna create a flood right along there. I have never been up for...Well, let's let it damage it first, and we'll pick up the pieces afterwards. I don't work that way, and I know the city does not either. But it's time for us to go back and look at each of the blue lines that we have and get with the environmentalist and whomever else and say, "Okay, we're gonna start something here, and we're gonna get little piecemeal here." Yes, and it's gonna cost the city. It will cost the city. I'm not sure exactly what, and maybe we can get it back in revenue or even in some special funding. But I do not believe that we want to wait until the damage is done, and then we go in and pick up the pieces afterwards. And the best example I can give you is along Morongo Road. And I hope that we can get this started, because I know working with the county and others, that it takes a while. If we start now, we might get it done in a year or two. Temecula wasn't built in a day, but it was done by hard work, and this is gonna be a little bit of hard work. And I thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. All right. Anyone else? No other speakers? All right, so I will close the public hearing. And any comments? Council comments? No? Right, then we can entertain a motion. Mr. Washington.
Yeah, I'm not sure...Greg, I know you've dealt with that issue in the past, especially as it relates to the Marietta Creek.
Sure.
And the Ammonazuma. But I think Wayne has a good point. Is there a way to sort of create a schedule so that maybe on a rotating basis, we're kind of revisiting that issue on a regular basis? And I know it does take time. Sometimes the answer is no. A lot of times, the answer is no.
Yeah, many of the blue line streams that the city actually owns the property under or the underlying, or we have an easement to gain access to. We recently went through a process with the Resource Agency, particularly Department of formerly known as Fish and Game, State of California, now it's Fish and Wildlife. It took us about three or four years to finalize our annual maintenance permit so that we could actually go into these areas and routinely clean those out. We had to acquiesce to some of their requirements. We gotta have some monitors in place now in case there are any endangered species around when we go to do that clearing. Many of the areas that Wayne brings to light, though, are outside of our control. They are under the jurisdiction of private property owners, other agencies. Flood control is one of them. But I think what we can do is share with them that we were successful in going through the process with those resource agencies that would allow us to go and clear out those creeks that we do control, and impress upon them exactly what Mr. Hall pointed out.
I know which one he's referring to.
Yeah, I know exactly what he's talking about.
And he's right, that, you know, with some serious...Not that serious rainfall's been a threat here recently, but with some serious rainfall, there could be problems in that area. And probably we haven't tackled those because, like you said, it's private property. I know for some time, the Ammonazuma was closed because we were not able to get in and clear out the creek. And then more recently, we've had some success in getting in there and doing that. So if there's a pathway even for the private property owners to get there, maybe we can demonstrate that to them and tell them who they need to talk to, what kind of permit application they need to fill out. Maybe we can sort of get on a regular...
Yeah, we'll absolutely get in touch with those property owners and share with them the course of action that we had to take to get the ability to have those stream beds cleared out so that the water could pass.
Jeff?
Even though those are subject to permitting and problems with the Resource Agency, is there any reason that those properties couldn't go through the same process that these go through? And I realize that then we couldn't abate because we don't have the permits from the agencies, but it might put us in a position to go ahead and get those along with the other ones, the properties that we own ourselves, and put us in a position to abate those. And that's one question. The other is, do we have the ability to take lands owned by other public agencies, flood control, through this same process?
I'll have to explore the other public agency question. I'm not sure that we can impose a lien on another governmental agency. I'd seek the advice of the city attorney there. But the other private properties, by all means, we could probably go through the same process. Our expenditure, though, would probably be much higher on those because we'll have to process permits and go through that process with those resource agencies, and we'll have to invest quite a bit of money upfront to secure those permits, and the least cost will be clearing the weeds.
Yeah, I agree, but I think if we go through that and see what the feasibility is either way, then at least we'll know what our options are.
We'll explore.
Thank you.
All right. I mean, could we secure permits on behalf of the private property owners? Would that be considered an inappropriate use of public funds?
We could do it if they funded our positions, but you're in a predicament where they don't have the money...They're not expending the money to clear the weeds on their own or secure the permits on their own. So similar to what I was explaining to Councilmember Comacher, we would have to front that money and include that cost in any lien we imposed upon that property.
Yeah, right. Okay. Anything further?
Move item 15.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor already.
We do?
We do not.
No, we didn't? Okay, so I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Don't you look at me that way.
You're running the meeting. It's your meeting.
Make votes. All right. And that's four with Mr. Roberts absent. Okay. All right, on to council business number 16. Selection of member to serve on the Diaz Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Move Mr. Washington.
Second.
That was easy. Motion and a second.
Mr. Roberts isn't here to oppose that.
Would he?
I don't know. Maybe I could make up some case.
Anybody want to argue Mr. Washington...Mr. Roberts' position?
For the sake of the public, Mr. Roberts has been serving on that committee with Mr. Nigar, I believe, and he has asked to be removed, and the motion is to put Mr. Washington on that.
I asked him to ask, but I would like to have Peter just explain why I got off the committee and then why I'm able to get back on the committee.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, Councilmember Washington owns a commercial condominium unit in the Business Park to the south of this property, and we had advised him that he could not participate with respect to matters on this property because although his unit is 750 feet, probably more, from the property, the common area of the homeowner... of the Property Owners Association is right across the street. However, in May of this year, the Fair Political Practices Commission changed the rule, and they changed the rule by saying that it is only the main condominium or household unit that you own that is counted for the purpose of a conflict of interest and not the outlined common area property.